What are we waiting for?
You.
Yes.
Interesting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a regular meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Fondleak to order. Will the roll call vote please?
Chisholm.
Here.
Gobaski.
Here.
Pack.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Will.
Here.
We're 100%. And I'm just the way of form. Report on public notice, please.
Public notice, thank you. President, children's public notices were mailed to KFIC 107.1 WFDL radio and Fondleak reporter, as well as posted at the US Bank, the district offices, and the village municipal building on Friday, May 19th, 2017.
Thank you, sir. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance as we all do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Minutes were distributed amongst the package of information that went out to all of board members. I trust you all had a chance to review that. Any additions or corrections? Two of the minutes as were...
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
On April 24th, under the election of officers, the motion is listed, but there's no recording of the vote, which, sorry, correct, it was unanimous.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it was voiceful or roll call, but we should note that it passed, and we all are truly those officers.
True. Good catch.
And that's on the 4th, the 24th?
Anything else?
We'll make those.
That amendment, then, they will stand, published as a mandate. Treasuries report.
Cash balance on hand, April 24th, $217, 251,746.37. Receipts from April 25th through May 22nd, $98,913.04. Transfers from investment accounts, $900,000. Total receipts, $1,250,600.41. Expenditures from 4/25 to 5/22, $1,922.32 and $39. Total expenditures, $1,092,324.39. Cash balance on hand, May 22nd, 2017, $158,335.2. Transactions bills are recommended for payment as shown on the attached list dated May 22nd, Bills to be approved at the main board meeting, pre-approved checks, $929.26. Board meeting checks, $238,799.13. Total bills to be approved, $623,722.39.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. Likewise, the financial information was distributed in the package. Does anyone have any questions about any of the expenditures that were posted? Seeing none, what's the board's pleasure on total bills to be approved of $623,722.39?
So moved.
On second.
All right, moved consecutive. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pack.
Yes.
Gobaski.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes. Seeing none, bills to be... The bills are approved for payment. Clerk's report. Correspondence.
All right, so we have donations, $800 for two scholarships from some wonderful person that donated them to us. It's anonymous. Edgewood Church, two direct input boxes and laptop interface box for theater. And Tim Van Bynen, $53 for any child in need of school meals.
And just another. Well, another thing, there was, I think there was a news show or a news story that ran a while back, and we got calls at Friendship and at the high school and the district office, because there's shows about how kids are getting food and schools are turning kids away because they have a negative one count, which never happens here, by the way. But people were kind of concerned, so we actually had other people anonymously, and we give money to for that, so it's pretty cool.
I believe that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, item H, student council report, for the last time. Oh.
Okay. For student council, this past week, nine new members were elected to student council for the freshman class of 2021. And also, the new student council president and officers were elected, and the new president is Anna Mae Launte. For another club, NHS, 13 new members were inducted, and the officers are elected tomorrow as well. There is also a new crew for the Oriole TV. And the top four of the class of 2017 go to the best in class at Lambeau in Green Bay this Wednesday.
And who are they?
Brenna Weatherby, Marissa Strobel, Leo Forsythe. The spring sport regionals begin today with track, tomorrow with softball, Thursday with baseball, and the next Thursday for soccer. And then the seniors only have four days of school.
Woo-hoo! I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And just an update, Trac Branny won the long jump at qualified for sectionals. She won the 100 qualified for sectionals. And now we got Alexander and Megan Zagar and Frank, or Mike Mazorski, there's a bunch of people that might have known, so we got a sectional.
Great, all right.
And then tomorrow, there's a home softball regional game, right?
Yes, against W... No, it's not W, yes, it's regional.
W.
Very good weather.
And then, if you would, so as a tradition, since we have a board, we have a student that dedicates Monday nights to come to board games, or to board meetings. The board has made, we got together and we made this blanket for you as a representation of who we're going to be. Congratulations. Really help.
A holly.
So Paige, what is your plans for next year?
I am attending UW Madison in the pursuit for a degree in international business, international business and marketing. With emphasis in Spanish.
All right, very nice. Well, we appreciate all the time that you've put in on it, and I'm sure that all of the time at the meeting, you sometimes wondered what you had got yourself into, but appreciate your time and your effort that you've spent supporting the student body here at the board level, so. And we certainly wish you good luck in the future, on your future endeavors, so. An exciting time at the school.
Great job, Paige.
All right, next on the agenda is citizens' input, so at 7:09, I will declare the citizens' input portion of the meeting open. This is an opportunity for any citizens who wish to address the board regarding anything that they would like to get out their chest. Tell us if the district's a blank town. Seeing none, I will declare the citizens' input meeting, the portion of the meeting closed at 7:10 PM. Next on the agenda, item J, superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much, Paige. Very excited here. What we're going to do is, we are going to start off with our Oriole outfitters, since we've had, I have it here, since we've had Kurt Wismer come and take over, or not take over, but add to our business department. He has done a lot of great things, including develop FBLA, a school store, and tonight we have his crew of 2016-17 to give the highlights and annual report for Oriole outfitters and other information. So I will turn it over to them and the presentation.
Should we stand up, or?
Yes.
Does somebody want to run this, or you're helping too?
I'll run it. All right, so.
Well, I'm Jennifer.
I'm Sophie.
Yeah.
Well, about the operation, the Oriole Outfitter Store has been run by students currently in the retail management classes at the school. It is a part of the business tech program, and it is taught by Mr. Wismer, and all the profits that we earn go to the school, back to the school store, and to other clubs of FBLA and other stuff. I am the general manager of this year, and I basically handle all of the major scheduling stuff with papers and schedules, point system on the cashier, cashier, cashier. And I also focus on making sure we have little to no shrink in performance.
So I'm the merchandise manager and sales promotional manager, since, because we had to double up, because we only had three people that run the store. So my jobs would include to determine how much and what to buy, and when to bring it in, place orders and handling prices, handling and controlling merchandise for receiving through the final sale, and merchandising and stocking of the kiosk. Everybody should have that memory.
I'm the financial manager. My job is to handle cash, manage financial reports, and then approve that cash accounts payable. Some of the improvements for this year was we had a fall rummage sale. We had more team and group orders, and we sold to online customers directly with a great variety of products.
Was this the first year you did online sales?
Yes. Yeah, and we got some pretty good, like, customers and a lot of, like, revenue. Yeah. All right, so for promotions, we have our website behind the link, it'd be www.orealfooters.com. And then we have a Facebook and an Instagram page, which more consumers come from Facebook than Instagram, because Instagram is more of like the kid generation, and they see that, but like, they'll come in and buy some stuff, which is pretty good business. We have the display case in the Horst Mann Commons, and then we have the display case over here in the Bessie Allen by the district office. And then we have flyers. These are our websites, well, our homepages for both Facebook and Instagram, pretty much create all the promotions that we put on there, and then we'll put them out, I think, weekly? Yeah, weekly. These are also some, the Pink Out shirts I created, and then I printed off these flyers and hung around the school for everybody to see, and then did a Christmas is coming sort of theme for the store. We also had a sale during that time that you could get so much, I don't know, can't remember, so far in the year. And then we have an end of the year promotion, so. This is our website. We, was it David Belangi who created it?
Correct.
Yeah, he created it, and then we just perfected it. The Oriole Outfitters, if you go to our website, it pops up and it says shop for Spiritur Online, you can click that, and then just order online. And then these are our display cases in both the high school, and then the two on the right, or, well, yeah, the two on the right are from the Bessie Allen. Not the best, but worked with what I had. This is just a list of some of the merchandise that we have done in-store and for special orders for our sports teams and other clubs. Some of our new special orders are more of the class t-shirts. Last year, we only had the freshman class shirts, and then we had three out of four this year. We also have some more plays and sports who came and ordered through us. And in-store, we added a couple new items, which include tie-dyes, hats, and camera sweaters. And then here are just some examples of our in-store items, which is for the general population of the school.
See, like, we brought in Sport Tech lace-up sweaters, which are kind of big, like, those are really comfortable, sorry. Those are really, those are really comfortable. We also brought in the camera sweaters and the new, the two new hats, and then we have tassel pads, and then we have just beanies.
I love my tassel hat. It's light on it. It's very high quality. I work this week.
And then here are just some examples of our club and sports online special orders that we have between the bandship that was this year, basketball, FBLA, we had the play and the musical come through us. So pretty much our expenses.
At the end of September, we had our fall rummage sale. It was much, it consisted of all the vintage Oriole athletic apparel that was donated to us, and the prices ranged from $2,000 to $5,000. And the total from the rummage sale was at $379 that we made.
And I want to know, as you can see.
Finances for this year, we purchased a total of $923 worth of clothes for the store throughout the year. Special orders for the school year totaled up to $4,738.25. We sold a total of $2,001 worth of items in-store. In between online orders and special orders, we made a total of $1,451,000.
That's great. Good job, girls.
And then on the screen shows the sales quota ratio, and compares sales, expenses, and then our profits. And then special orders compared to in-store, special orders with clubs, and special orders online.
We did a lot more online sales this year than like last year, and that's really good. What she said. So we did really good compared to last year.
Do you remember what your, what your profits were from last year?
They were well over half that, to my understanding, by regulation.
I know it was classics.
How much inventory are you carrying over into next year, you know?
I know that we are focusing on doing less inventory and doing more on the online things, but we do also carry a couple of each example of the tie-dyes and sweaters that we have had from past years.
So on a special order, what's your turnaround time? If somebody goes to the website and places a special order during the school year, how long does it take to get it?
Like, a week or two, like, say about a week.
Yep, and then we'll contact you when your order's in.
Or deliberate.
And get it, yeah.
Donations, most of our donations go to our newly founded NFPLA, FBLA chapter, that is also advised by Mr. Wismer. We have donated $490 to that club this year for things like attending Fall Leadership Lab, which is a group get-together slash, like, teaching, it's like a conference-type thing, also to help people who can participate for the regional level and state level, and we are planning on doing a business scholarship of $500.
You could apply for that, Paige, right? Because you go out into business, yeah. You should apply for it.
And then our managers for next year is Tricia Grohl, Autumn Muller.
Amy Robidon.
Amy Robidon, Rashani Patel, and Brenda Venidas. And they're like really lovely girls, so the store's in good hands, so.
Improvements for next full year, increase in presence at sporting events to sell more merchandise, increase in group team and club sales, and promote more online sales. And that's it, thank you.
And one thing that you guys mentioned, but we're arguing, we'll look at building the school store in with the Commons. Kurt did a great job at building one up in Chiocke, and so it should be pretty cool. The Orioles nest the land, so people can see it.
Board, do you guys have any questions, or ladies, or Kurt?
And Kurt, since you're here, would you just give them a little, something that we're going to be doing, so talk about marketing, but I want to introduce, you're going to hear more and more about this thing called incubator EDU. We're going to be one of only three school districts in the state that are going to be doing this, and it's an entrepreneurial curriculum, so that's going to be coming. We're shadowing it this year for $5,000, and then we're looking at getting outside sponsorship for not only to do the room, but also to pay the $20,000 annually, so that we can utilize that curriculum and drive the incubator EDU. And Kurt's actually going to be going to a workshop down in Chicago to teach it. So right now, Nina's going next year, and then, or this coming year, and then after that, Fondleak and North Fondleak are going to be the next ones that are doing it. We're the only ones in the state, out of probably about 60 throughout the country, so it's pretty, pretty cool.
So it's a, it's essentially an entrepreneurship academy. Think of an entire class built around the premise of Shark Tank. The students, it will replace my current marketing class, which Paige is in currently, and instead of focusing on a curricular perspective of going through the different units and facets of marketing and entrepreneurship, the whole concept of the class, the project base, where they will be, will be solving a consumer problem, identifying a product or service that could be brought to market, they'll be paired with a local community member of an entrepreneurial experience or business community member of some sorts, with maybe with the Chamber or the Rotary, or Women in Management or something. And then that partnership will be formed throughout the course of the semester. At the end of the semester, they pitch to, basically, the Sharks with the intentions of potentially launching their product, their brand, getting some investment money to, or seed money to get that started. So we're pretty excited to see where that's going to go, based on the experience that we've had with the eighth graders and their food and snack convention, and then this year we had Hal McCollum compete solo, which is a good props to him for the evening night competition through the Fondleak Ecom Development Council.
Which are all going to join together.
Right, so I think we're moving in the right direction, and there's quite a bit of need within the Fondleak community to provide opportunities for youth to bring that entrepreneurial experience back to the community and build the business base, so we want to be part of that. We'll be, the next step, once the waters subseize a little bit from the end of the school year, is I'll be reaching out to the Chamber and the Rotary and the Women in Management and looking for some of those partners. That's going to be my first step as being a board.
Sounds good.
And the nice, the nice thing too is that the time will be accredited with a university, it's that type of curriculum, and what I love about it's not, the product's important, but it's about that fail fast, about getting your product to, you know, it's about the whole process. And some schools started in Barrington, Illinois, and there's some students that have actually, are making some significant amount of money in running a company.
Yeah, what, there's a handful of teams that did it in high school a year or two ago, and are continuing it through their college, and it's funding a portion of their college costs, so we'll see. It's still a very early program to see the long-term gains and outcomes, but we're pretty optimistic.
Which university do you say it was going through?
It isn't yet, but Barrington High School in Illinois. There's a lot of suburban Illinois, more affluent communities that are utilizing it, and the idea, they, I had learned about this from us in Austin, Texas, at the suburban schools, superintendents, and they just roll out, there's many in California, but it's, what's really cool is, is it's, instead of just telling you, you know, get out there, take chances, it teaches specific business models of what to do and how to do it, so.
I know that there's that business and entrepreneurship program at Moraine Park that I sit on the advisory committee for, I was, I knew that might be a good...
Oh, yeah.
Just because if any of the students are looking to...
You just made it on the list?
I know a person who I can hook you up with.
Erin, can I also mention the FBLA for her, for the year?
Kurt, can you mention the FBLA?
I'm not mentioning FBLA. We also had a great year in FBLA. We doubled our growth in the group, which was excellent in our participation. We had a number, 19 students competed at the regional level this year. Of those, Kirsten Roebel placed eighth in public speaking, her sister Lexus placed fifth in public speaking, Jayden Mazanca and Jordan Eyes placed fourth in public service announcement. We were so close, I hope for sure we're going to get there. And we also got a fourth place in digital video production with Daniel Odi and Darius Hayes, seventh place in management decision-making with Allison Bertley and Tricia Grohl. Kyle McCollum got another fourth place, top three advance. Oh, that was painful. Introduction to Business Presentation, Ellie Collin got eighth place in business communications, Jennifer Redrick placed fourth in sales presentation, and then we also had Tori Corpetino, Jennifer Redrick, and Megan McLehman all qualify for state competitions. Jenna also competed in the Community Service Project, which was an additional project that she put together along with Alexis Roebel. Tori Corpetino participated again in word processing, and Megan McLehman in social media campaign.
And she got first.
She got first at regionals, yeah, so, and we all worked. So we're hoping next year to double it again, we'll see how we do.
And we didn't have FBLA in a long time until Kurt got here. Also, I know he won't talk about it, so I'll give him some props. Oriole TV actually got hired by the Sophia Foundation.
Correct.
And they, they did, there was, what was that called? Servant Leadership?
Servant Leadership Conference.
Was like 300 people at the live, or at the YMC, at the Holiday Inn, so we're looking at starting to even develop some sort of revenue streams too.
So we filmed that event, went pretty well as a guinea pig event for our group, and the three boys did a really nice job. We're editing those videos now, and in compensation for that, they're making a $500 donation to FBLA. So, which we can serve these.
Well, just again, a thank you to Kurt, because, you know, like Erin mentioned, I mean, since he's been here, you know, numbers have grown, every opportunity that Kurt can give kids to empower them, whether it's the eighth grade food and snack convention, which we get to reap the benefits of, but the kids, you know, get that experience to really, you know, empowering. When you go in Kurt's classroom, it's not Kurt standing in front of the classroom leading it, it's Kurt facilitating, hey, you guys, let me know what you need, and, and they're working and so forth, but, you know, we've had a number of kids in the past few years now earn MOS certificates, so they get that dual enrollment. We also get to claim that under Act 59 for money, you know, the FBLA, you know, incubator that he's willing to take out summertime, he's just made a tremendous impact on our business department and school.
That great hiring of a language arts teacher at the high school, he put in a good word, so that didn't hurt either.
You know, just get to be State Teacher of the Year by not doing that kind of stuff, so appreciate having you around.
Thank you, Beth.
That was the best. First day, you meet the whole staff. Oh, by the way, we have the State Business Teacher of the Year that's going to be starting teaching.
Hope you don't embarrass easily.
Well, thank you guys very much. And what are we then, welcome to go if you'd like to right now, or stay for about an hour and a half? We're good.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, just this past weekend, cutting the lawn, and I, as I had said earlier, I used to listen to a lot of music when I cut the lawn and ran and did things like that, but I found out that ACDC, Beastie Boys, although entertaining, really didn't help me get a whole bunch smarter, so I've been listening to podcasts recently, and this is going to lead into what Adam's going to talk a little bit about, what he and Amy Mokert are working on. One of the things that America has always professed itself to do is to inspire people to get to that next level. If you come from nothing, you have very little resources, America's a land of where you can be portable within, you know, the structure of status. You work hard, you get opportunities, you work hard, you get opportunities. Well, we have found more and more that students that don't come from affluence, or students that come from poverty, have, find it harder and harder to get there. Harvard, Stanford, MIT, they now have scholarships that if you score an X, Y, and Z in the ACT or whatever, you can get free college. You can do these. You can do these things, well, that's fine and good for a kid that can make it all the way to high school and doesn't fall through the cracks because of social, family, or other hardships to get to that point. One of the things that is recommended that some people are doing out in California, some venture capitalists who are investing in kids in poor areas, especially in the Los Angeles area, is finding those very bright kids that come from economically disadvantaged areas, or come from areas that normally you would look at when they're younger, and start to support them then, instead of just waiting. So we're trying to do a lot, once we get kids to high school and get found, but what are we doing? We're missing so many because from all of our principals, the counselors, psychologists can tell you that a kid's life is so difficult from when they're in elementary to high school, that there's so many chances that they might not get this opportunity to really excel at what they could do because of things that are out of their control. We have not really focused that much on, and I think gifted and talented is a word, are words that sometimes have a connotation. I would say just accelerate, I would say talent searching. Where can we find the most talent, and then how can we really exacerbate all resources in order to make that talent be found? And that's what Adam and Amy are working on, is a process so that we can really be talent hunters, find those kids wherever they're at, whenever they're at, and try to always accelerate them. Not just helping our students that need remediation, but also help those students that need a little bit more push. So I'll turn it over to Adam a little bit to show you what we're gonna be doing in order to, I think this will be a really key cog too, in the future of our school.
Awesome, thank you. Tough presentation to follow up, but I'll do my best here, this kid did a great job, so. And this is in your board report too, but see if I have a paper copy of this. And like Erin said, this is all about, really nothing different than anything else we do in structurally, it's all about helping students where they're at, and again, we do more and get to greatness. So what I'd like to do is just talk briefly about the process that Amy Mockert and I took, and then kind of walk you through just that philosophy here, on these pictures behind you, and then get into that sheet that you have in front of you. And Amy would have loved to have been here, she actually was planning on being here until early this morning. She emailed me and said, hey, am I totally messed up? I looked at my calendar and I have my daughter had a percussion concert tonight for the band, so she couldn't be here, but she said that she wishes she could, so she's a great resource too, if you guys have other questions, but. You know, basically as I was looking into my role and thinking about all the students in our district, you know, just looking through some things, realized that, hey, we need to have a plan for all students, including students that are bright or gifted. The state would say that every school should have a gifted and talented coordinator, so for the time being, that is me, I'm our gifted and talented coordinators, if you have parents or anyone out there.
That makes sense.
If anyone has questions, you can refer them to me, I'd be happy to answer any questions they have. And then we also should have a program and a plan in place and programming support. I put this document here that I'll go through in a minute, is that plan. So again, if the DPI or a parent or a teacher, or you guys would say, hey, what's our plan for supporting students on the other end of the learning journey, we would be able to have an answer for that, which in the past we haven't, so. So basically, if you, I can have you look back here, so this first, and I'm gonna use my pointer here. You may have seen this first triangle before, this is called RTI or Response to Intervention. So that triangle is something that all our teachers know about, and this is looking at students that are struggling with academic skills, and they need certain skills. So most of our kids will be in here in a tier one. Research and data would say that about 80, 85% of students across America would be in this tier one realm. In the classroom, they get all the support they need. About 10 to 15% of students would be in this tier two, where they need classroom instruction and a little bit extra. And then there'd be this tier three of students that need classroom work, and they need some really intensive interventions to fill some holes and gaps with instruction. This is kind of new diagram here that you'll start to see, and we'll adopt something similar to this when we talk about RTI, because it's not just kids that are struggling or have skills they're missing, it's also kids on the other end that have the skills already, and they need to be pushed on that continuum of learning. So basically, you'll start to see that diamond, that RTI diamond, and we'll talk to our staff about that. And we've already done some things this year, when we look at data, we're asking teachers, hey, which kids already know what you want them to learn? And we ask teachers, what's your plan for that? So we're starting to have those conversations being asked, and staff knows that, that, and we're not looking at just a certain number of students, we are looking at all our students and doing best for all of them. So referring specifically to this document here, I'll go through this briefly, and I'm gonna quote what Kirsten said too. This is just a starting point, we're gonna make it perfect as we go through, kind of like their FBLA website, and you know, they start with that, but they're gonna make it perfect, so I'd like to quote there if I could steal that. So this is our first answer, and we'll use this to guide us next year and beyond, and we'll make adjustments as we need to. So as I dug in this year with research on gifted and talented and what that means, here's a couple of things I've learned. One is, kids can be gifted in lots of different areas. They can be gifted in art, they can be gifted in math, reading, writing, I think I wrote down a couple other ones that deep, I would say. Leadership, creativity. When we look at this document here, we're looking mostly at for ELA or math, students that are excelling in those two areas. As far as artistic giftedness would go, I think we are pretty good with that. We offer art classes, pretty much kindergarten through 12th grade, so if kids have a giftedness in that area or an interest, we can support that. Same goes for some of the other subjects we offer. So again, basically with this, we're kind of looking at those two subjects, mostly math and LEA, or ELA, so that'd be English, Language Arts. Now, the other thing I've learned too is that with giftedness, there's a difference between students that are gifted and students that are just really bright, smart kids. So we have, you know, a ton of gifted, or excuse me, a ton of really smart, bright students in our district. I don't know how many students we have that would qualify for gifted and talented. That would be something that we'd have to have a tool for that, that would identify if they're truly gifted or not. Even then, it's kind of just a district's decision on, okay, we feel that they are at this, so that we would call them, that would be receiving these gifted, maybe tier three supports, or really specific things we're doing for a small population of kids that we think are ready for that. So keep that in mind as you go through this, we had, there's lots of bright students. I don't know where we're at as far as gifted students in our district, I'm guessing we have some, but we might not, but we definitely have lots of students that are bright and ready for extended learning. So the top row here, it talks about the kind of accelerated learning. So we have students currently that we have been accelerating their learning for a number of years, and we've kind of just done that on the fly, just based on a teacher maybe saying, hey, we think the student is scoring well on these tests, or is really bright, and they maybe go to the principal, or go to another teacher and say, what should I do? And we try to support that student that way. What we're gonna start to change, we're gonna start to track these certain checkpoints in the boxes here, and we have certain assessments that we'll use, and if students hit certain checkpoints, then we'll find those students opposed to waiting for a teacher to come to us, because there might be students who are missing that, that, hey, you know what? Like Erin just said, this student needs to do a little bit more, and needs to be pushed more. And teacher, you have to know that you have a student like this in your classroom, if you don't already, which in most cases they do. So we're looking at, they meet the two out of these three requirements, then we start to look at that formal identification process for a gifted student, and I'll talk about that in a second. The one piece I would highlight in here is that teacher checklist, just so you guys, that document isn't developed yet, but will be developed this summer, and that would be things like work habits, skills in the classroom, observations of the teacher, work samples in the classroom, classroom assessments. So it might be things, you know, a student might not show all they know on a computerized test because it's just not their modality to show that, so we have, you know, we don't wanna say this test is the end all be all, but we'll kind of look for them to be two or three, two of those three criteria. Does that first part make sense? And that's kind of like, kids are just ready for extended learning. All right, and then we have, again, like you can see, they're broken into different grade bands. In this K2 grade band, there's no formal identification for gifted and talented, and there's no testing that would be administered in that case. But there are things that we do in K2 that we can use to help students that are ready for extended learning. So if we wanna have early entrance into kindergarten, we could do that. I don't know, historically, if we've done that too much, but if there's a student that, hey, this seems appropriate and right for the student, then we could do that. Differentiation in classroom, which is just giving students what they need, or also acceleration in that K2 grade band as far as, maybe they're gonna have math class with a first grade textbook, or textbook instead of a kindergarten textbook, or parts of math class in that grade level, if that's what they need. So the three through five band looks very similar. What changes here is that there, actually, we can start to do some gifted and talented identification. The one tool that many districts are using in the state, I think everyone that we have talked to is using this COGAT test, and that will be a test that would have the students go through certain tasks and then identify, and if they hit a certain score, then they might be in that quote-unquote gifted range, where they might receive that kind of tier three higher up support. And then things we do at that level then, it kind of changes to, down to the last two would be GT, Classroom Clusters, GT, Subject Clusters, what those would be, and we're gonna do some more learning about that this next school year. Those would be things like, maybe we put, if we have three or four kids in a grade level that have been identified gifted based on not only our assessment, but also this identification tool, that we might have it in the same classroom, or two or three in a group, in two or three different classrooms, and then have some specific programming that teacher do with them, just being very purposeful about that. So we might, you know, we look at a lot of, at Special Ad, we look at EL populations, and we do scheduling, so we also be looking at that giftedness piece when we're doing scheduling, might be doing some clustering there. And then middle school, high school, this is the area I don't worry as much about, because once you hit sixth grade, there's lots of room for that accelerated learning with just, hey, you wanna go to the next math class, great, you can go as far as you wanna go. Same thing with literacy, you know, you can advance in classes, and we have AP classes, that sort of thing. So, you know, same process for the middle school, high school, but I think there, and most districts I've talked to as well, it kind of takes care of itself with that class differentiation, the class offerings opposed to that K5 level. Now, as we start to have these, the data come in, and we have students that we want to have this discussion about, the teams, there would be a team making that decision based on, or that team would consist of part of the building principal, the classroom teacher, myself, and others that are associated with that student, and we would look at the data and decide, okay, what does this student need? In some cases, they might, their need might be met in that classroom, where we say, hey, we know they're at this point, and everyone feels comfortable with what we're doing right now as working for the student, so we just have to be aware and monitor what's happening. So it might not be a polygramatic change to that student's learning, but we all just kind of know that this is the plan that now should continue for the next school year, that the next year's teacher should know about that. The one last thing I'll mention, I'll open up to you guys for questions or comments. With this, the time we're looking at for this giftedness identification, that would be the 18-19 school year. So we won't do any formal gifted and talented screening next year. What we'd like to do is take a little more time to investigate that COGAT tool. I'd like to see our school psychologists look at that and give me some feedback on what they think. Again, most districts use that, and it's one of the only tools out there, so I'm guessing that would be the tool we're gonna be going with, but I wanna make sure we do our due diligence, so we're looking to have that tool in place, 18-19. So if we have kids that we think need to take that extra assessment to identify if they're at that gifted level or not, then we can use that tool. So again, so for next year, we're just kind of gonna follow this process for just accelerated learning, and not have that formal tool in place until 18-19 school year.
Questions or comments? Well, if you look at this diamond, one of the things that we really focused on, and it's one of our goals, it's a second goal, our first goal is that everybody improves in literacy. And then the second goal is, is that every kid is exposed to the best instructional practices. And that's something that we see, like what's good for an AP or a CAP class is good for introductory class also. So it's that engaging teacher that you have, the different things that they did in order to help you learn. We can meet so many different needs and help kids get to learning and understanding things more by having more and more effective tier one instruction. That's what the first institute, we're gonna go with our 90-plus teachers at the beginning of August in Fond du Lac, where there's gonna be, it's a big focus on tier one instruction, which includes not only how you go about, you know, pedagogy, but also culture, and many different things, assessments, so. And with Adam, I think he's on the right track. This isn't about making things harder for kids, this is about challenging kids. It's not like you're accelerating, you're gifted, so now let's go make you do more work. It's, you know what, you're accelerated, you're beyond this, and in a professional learning community, that's the third question. If you get it, then what do we do? So it's pretty exciting, I think the more and more tier one that we get into. And then the last thing that I wanna mention is the next slide that we'll see, which is our building. And that building is gonna have a significant impact on us, our ability to differentiate instruction and spine it. So I'm not saying the buildings are most important, but it is going to be a variable that's gonna really help us to, I think, really differentiate instruction and really even get better tier one instruction. Questions or comments?
And I'll just say, again, a couple last things here, Amy Mockert, just know she, she's our own recruiting specialist at Elementary School, and she kind of had a passion for this, so it was great to have her alongside, so she deserves a lot of credit too, for working with me and helping to develop this. And the other piece too, Erin kind of alluded to, is, you know, there's kind of a parent or political element to this. So, you know, I like about this document, and I've talked to some parents already this year, where we've done some accelerated learning, where they said to me, you know, my child's gifted, and I kind of just say, you know, I don't say much that, I don't say back, hey, your child's gifted, I'd say, hey, I'm looking at your test scores, your student's really bright, and we're gonna make sure we're doing everything appropriate to meet their needs. So I can't say they're gifted or not, because I don't have a screen to look at or to say, yeah, based on this criteria, they are. But again, I don't see much of, you know, really bright student and a gifted student, this, what we're gonna do is the same thing, we're gonna give them what they need to be successful, so it doesn't really matter what label we put on that, we're meeting these false students. And it's been cool to see our teachers, who I know they know that we're gonna ask that question of, hey, what are you doing for these kids that are at this level and already know that? Because we're teaching them things they already learn, or they already know that's on us. So we're wasting our time and their time, so we don't wanna do that.
This is like when I was in gifted and talented about fifth grade, and then things happened, it worked out, so, but it does work. I think I was gifted and talented at that age, and I was just bright. You're right, if I were you.
I was too, I think my brother and sister were, so I think they just thought I was too, but.
So just to let you know, there's some gifted people that are trying here too, yeah, who are no longer official.
And not that they don't know, but even that skip from grade school to middle school, I mean, so, not that you wanna, it's gifted or talented either, but then at least that kind of follows them, so it's not like, oh, this child really is. You know, I mean, so they already kind of know that then coming into it.
Yeah, and that's a piece we've been missing too, we found out through this, that sometimes a student is being accelerated in math in third grade, maybe they're doing fourth grade math in third grade. They get to fourth grade, somehow that wasn't communicated, and that student does fourth grade math again. And we're, with this process, and with EducHunder, we can store our data, we're gonna have a way that that doesn't get missed, so that, again, we're not reteaching something the student already knows, gonna keep them going down that journey.
Another good thing is we have, I call it the nice kid syndrome. You have some students that are really nice, they understand the teacher needs. All of a sudden, they get to seventh, eighth grade, and they've got like a fourth grade reading level. And they're getting A's and B's. So I think this is gonna be another thing, where, you know, it's not about what grade you get, it's about the competency and meaning, and looking at the data, and that's what Adam's main job, is find out where they're at. So we want people to be well-adjusted, happy manners, be able to have the ability to work with others and be creative, but don't let that mask the need maybe to work a little more on reading and math and things like that. So this is more of a bigger picture about, you know, professional learning communities, which you hear all the time, and really, that's all about what are we teaching kids? And then number two, are they getting it? And then the third part, if they're getting it, then what do we do, and if they're not getting it, then what do we do? And that's really what a professional learning community is and what we're focused on. All right, let us look at the plans update. All right, so I set this out, now, this could be a process here, we'll turn around and get some comments as we go. So we met yesterday, or not yesterday, Friday, at ELC, we went on tours, I know that Vicki went, Steve went, Dave was there, Mary was there, it was fun. We saw a lot of things, went to four different schools. And we're working with Bray, and right now what we're doing is we're shooting for the moon, we're designing ideal everything of what we want. And it's been a process. The inherently, the board will make the final decisions, but as we were talking last week, Friday, these are wrong. These plans are wrong. They're all wrong until we get them right, which is gonna take us till next fall, but we're better now than we were before. As the process goes, the next step is, I think it's Thursday, all the construction management, adverse construction management applications are due. I know we got Sheer, I believe we have C.D. Smith, and we might have one more. Also know that I sent out that we have, like, I think this 12th, 13th, and 14th for interviews. Once we get them all in, we're gonna schedule those on one night, hopefully not across the three nights, where we would interview those different construction managers, that would be our next spot. Then in Kerry Joe. Then and Carrie Jo, she's, she's not here right now, just, she's got senior graduating kids, just like, like with Amy Mockert, so I told her, you can't miss your kid graduating last thing, so that's where she's at. And Debbie's also, Debbie's at what, non-mild crisis intervention training down by the airport, so she's down there today. But this, it's a process, but know that what we're going to do is get our construction manager, these will be a little more fleshed out when we get together in June. And then in August, we'll work over July, get the groups back together and go a little more. ELC, well, we're going to work on those plans, that's, nothing's going to get touched in that building for two years. Okay, second kindergarten, all that, two years are going to be over there. Over here, we're going to get, I talked Samantha and Mike, we're going to get like Mike McDowell, Samantha's got some people up in the office area, we're going to start to work with Mike, maybe some moving the offices, doing a lot of different things. Those plans won't be as intense and we'll develop those over the summer and into the fall, okay? Our biggest thing is right here, this is the 20 to 25 million dollar elephant room, okay? So the concept here is, is that we have early childhood through fifth grade all under one roof. And then the concept is, is that early childhood through kindergarten are under one roof, but yet they have their own feel to it and own uniqueness to it. And then when you get to first grade and kindergarten, they have some learning neighborhoods, but they're also, as you can see, the first grade and kindergarten, they're bigger rooms because they don't do as much traveling, they have more things going on in that room, it's more self-contained. And then when you get to the second, third, and then fourth and fifth, learning lands, as we're calling them right now, it changes a little bit where we look to see, as we were talking earlier about differentiation and how we can utilize the space to really promote optimal learning. So I'll just go through this really quick from the beginning. So in front right here, you're looking at the new district offices. They will be currently where the offices are right now and in the Pam Chia's room. And then as you go around here, the 4K, early childhood right here, this ID is our medically fragile students, right here with, and the pink is remodeling, okay? And then this is the second grade and first grade classes will be turned into five kindergarten rooms around this courtyard. Courtyard, currently right now, we're looking at doing some things that are low maintenance, but they can be different learning areas outside and having access to this outside courtyard area from each room. And then first grade are staying relatively the same except for across the hall, these second grade rooms, which we will turn into two first grade rooms, so you have that five. Also then over here, you have special ed, and this is here, so it can serve here and also there. And then coming down at the other remodel part, you'll look at, this is where Luanne Urbahn's room and storage would be banned, which we would use, not a whole bunch, but that's practices and things like that. The half of it, or about two-thirds of that gym, the new gym, will be music and these are built-in risers, so she could actually have 125, a grade level of kids in there practicing. And then the new art room, which would be that other half. Coming forward, this is currently the music room, this is that hallway going up to the parking lot. We would blow up the walls here, so this would be a big open area, so this would be all one commentary, which could be used for lunch, but not only lunch, it would also be utilized for boy scouts, girl scouts, E3, after-school stuff. And then over here, the buses will come and drop off, and this idea is, is this will be the playground. We saw something really cool where kids would go to lunch, like at Wanakee, and then when they're done eating, they go outside for recess. Currently right now, you go to recess, you sit there for 25 minutes, and then you got to walk across and then go outside. So this will be a whole different thing of really utilizing our outside space. And then this is the kitchen, and then this would be walking into, this would be new construction. So this would be in the back, and then I'll start from down here and go up. This is, this will be the friendship field house. Okay, it's going to be the side, we went in and we saw one Cromery Elementary School in Middleton. This is a beast, guys. This is going to be amazing. You're going to practice easily three teams, be able to host three different games at one time, have bleachers on both sides. Over here, we also have a cardio room built that I'm going to be talking with the Y and we'll do a partnership, we don't know. But this is going to be great, it's going to alleviate stress at the middle in the high school for youth sports. Also, we'll probably put a running track on the bottom too for track in the spring. It's going to help us huge. Matt doesn't know what he's going to do, I mean, he's got a closet right now with all his stuff, so this is going to be an amazing thing for indoor recess, for assemblies, whole bunch of stuff. Also, just like when they do the fifth grade versus staff basketball game, they're walking over here, they're doing a lot of things where we have a lot of some instruction time. Having this gym over here is going to be amazing. You'd walk in here and you can see the secure entrance where you have go into the office and then go into the office and go through here. And this is where we'd have a whole bunch of different things, you can look more in depth, including our psychologist, counselor, health rooms, principal, things like that. This would be an open two-story atrium. And the current idea is this is the world of friendship, okay? The world of friendship, so there'd be a big globe or something, then the idea is we have learning lands. So the, like when we went to Wanakee, they had like water, wind, grass, not sure, but what we're looking at doing is, is each different grade level is a continent, like Asia, Europe, North America, South America. So then as you come down here, here's another courtyard, these are steps going up, we've got concession stands, we've got bathrooms over here, which are accessible for here. The idea is that could be shut off, this could be shut off, this could be shut off here, so we're looking at containing the community or our youth sports or after hours to just this area. When you come to these learning lands, they're developed for 125 kids, five different sections. They're all very similar, you have one, two, three, four, five. Then you'll see here, here and here, those, these are all called STIs, or small group instruction. So instead of a kid going to speech and language or a kid going for special education pull out, or maybe a group working on something small, they'll all have windows in them with shades that come up, so you can still see though through it, but yet you can have it isolated and they'll be able to bring kids there. When you come here, lockers, so there'll be lockers for each kid, eleven locker, 125 lockers and a bathroom right here. And what I'm doing is going through one, it's replicated four times. This area right here is a teacher workroom and a teacher space, so in each one, we have a teacher lounge and a work area right in each pod, and then this is a commons area. So this would be the learning land or the commons area of these classes where you could push into and do many things. All the kids could be in here, they could have class meetings, you could have differentiation of things. And then you see these blue, those are retractable doors, closed glass, but then they can open up, so now all of a sudden your class can flow into there, very much flexibility. So that's replicated here, and then over here for the third grade, then upstairs, it's replicated here for fourth and then for fifth grade, or yeah, fourth and fifth. In between, what we're going to do is we're going to have the library. So let's go back to where the library is right now. We're looking at currently nutting this out, if you can kind of imagine, an educational Chuck E. Cheese's, okay? Without, without like guards and stuff like that, so it won't be too insane. But this will be an indoor playground for early childhood, so the library at ELC will be a play area, area your kids can, can play, run, do kinia, body movements, things like that. So in lieu of that, then we're going to build a library here, and you can see the size, this library is bigger than there and it's got two floors. So the idea then is our library media STEM area is right here, it's got access straight in from this hallway right here. And then you can see here, there's a nice glass element here, but the stairs, so you can picture looking out over to the OAC with a big two-story glass with stairs coming down and going out. So that's currently the development there and then replicated there. You can also see that behind the staircase here, there's a small group instruction room all over the place. So now, when we come over here to the second floor, we'll start with the common or with the gym. You can see this, I don't know if there's anybody's ever been to the YMCA in Oshkosh where they have a track on top? This will be a track that will go the whole field house around, so that kids can walk, you can have walking clubs, breaks, community, our retired access will be for this, so this will be a great, I think, addition. And then you can see here that there's, this is, you can get there from the elevator, which is right here, this is going to be the Dave world and Mary world and Ron world, where there's going to be our custodial maintenance and things there. Then you'll see here, this is, this right here and this right here, this is open to the second, to the bottom floor. So there'll be windows, but you can see down here is lockers, lockers, and once, and once again, it mimics what's underneath here and here. This is a STEM, so like a science lab or possibly special ed or possibly something else. And then once again, you can see that, the idea is to have our, our, our learning lands be that kids, so we have less instructional time wasted, they have their own bathroom, they have everything they need right there. And to give you a concept and idea of how big this commons is here, okay? If you know how big the cafeteria is at FLC, it's about two-thirds. So you're looking at a substantial size of this commons and these learning areas. So that's currently what our design is right now. And back, you're going to, as we go through, we're going to have to talk to engineering from, we're using Reptler. We'll probably see parking go around the hill. I mean, it's going to push things back, it's going to be, I think, a real awesome place. The kids and the families all dropped off and back, all the buses will come up here and we'll look at that, early childhood can be up here, so drop off and pick up. So it's been a lot of work kicking some ideas around, this is even a more up-to-date drawing than what we had on Friday with all the input that we had on Friday.
So a lot of these changes from the initial concept that we use for the referendum are coming from the staff.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. And what's really cool, I was Dave and Mary and Maria, Carrie Jo, it's, we're finally there. It took a while, there's hurt feelings, because you bring up a, a design to be like, did you see what they did? They took that wall out. Did you see where kindergarten is? Did you see there's only like two rooms for EC? Where, where's title one going to be? Aaron, did you see that there's the lockers? Where are the lockers? Why would they be there? Where are staff going to be? And we had to talk, bring people in and tell them, okay, I want you to hold a mirror up in front of you and say, did you see what they did? And then when you say they, look in the mirror because you are they. And I think people are starting to get it, because there's nothing that can't change, absolutely nothing. And I love the pride that people got input. We learned that, what was that, in the forest, where people, some of the staff said, I wish we would have had more input, we would have done things differently. That is not going to happen here at all. And I mean, something, and the cool thing is, is that when somebody says, well, I don't know how we would, we need to be able to do this, and the idea is, is forget what we're doing now, what would we ideally like to do? And let's build it to that, for that. What, just a side note is, so first off, we were thinking maybe cubbies and everything would be a great thing. You go down, you look at them, some of these cubbies look like a Green Bay Packer locker room. I mean, it's really high quality wood, they look really cool, until you put stuff in them, then it looks like a mess and junk. So we were like, hey, lockers are the way to go. And everybody's like, you know what? That is the way to go, even first grade, kindergarten loves the lockers, it just makes sense and cleaner. So this is where we're at right now. Any questions? Okay, are you ready? Construction management interviews will be coming up in June, one of those three days. We're going to try for Monday, we're really going to try for Monday.
But whatever works.
But whatever works. I'm almost standing exactly where you're standing. No, it'll be in June. Mary, Dave, do you guys have any input or of the visits or you've been part of the design?
I thought ELC really was satisfied, you know, with it, considering, you know, they all had different ideas, but today, everybody seemed happy with it.
So just, just to recap, the current ELC programs would be in that building for the next two school years.
Yes. At least, yeah, two years. Figure we dig next year, the idea is, is from March until March, that's where we build the new thing. And then after that, what we'll do is we'll start to move some people around and then hopefully in that summer of 2019, 18 or 19, that's where we would redo the pink areas. So once we get the plans going, that's where I'm going to come with, hey, here's the schedule we're looking at. There's going to be one year where I think we'll probably get out, like Campbell Sport gets out tomorrow. Yeah. Yeah, they get out because, and then they don't start until after September, they're giving themselves like two months, I think the Springs did the same thing a while back. So once we get this planned, once we get the construction manager, then we'll start looking at timelines.
Why don't you expand a bit on the move of the district office over there, because it's kind of a significant difference.
Yeah, so we, so I think it was Brandon Switz and Kim Broden, it was a day after, I think, the referendum passed, hey, have you thought about the, about area here and maybe the district office move? Never thought of it. But if the district office moves, then we redo this and it's not going to take a whole bunch to make that Bessie Allen, make that secured entrance, almost like take that whole area where you walk in and secure that off, and then that's the Bessie Allen office. This, this will still be the district meeting from now. I think we'll probably end up meeting in the new library, the new LMCEO or look in the back, I think that's where we'll probably start doing our board meetings. But then this right now could be a large group instruction, which easily could be made into two different classrooms. Then where they were at the office, that can be all redone, or that can be small group instruction in other classrooms. Then if the classrooms move down here and we need room up at the high school, you've got the cafe and then you've got two rooms that could be claimed by the high school there, that could be part of Horace Mann. So by moving the district office, in essence, we get three classrooms for Bessie Allen and three classrooms for the high school.
So the main entrance is going to be here?
For Bessie Allen, that's what we're thinking, the main entrance will be here, which will change the traffic flow and everything up there, which will be a good thing. All right. Cool. All right. Personnel update, we're right now waiting on psychologists, they interviewed, and I think, who was on the psychologist interviews? Adam, were you? How's that going? I think we're down to two candidates.
Good, yeah. We, three people applied and three people interviewed, and you never know, but actually two of those people I think are, know their stuff and know what they're doing, it's kind of looking at that best fit right now and, yeah, just emailing them to kind of see if she can help with some calls, kind of, she's out right now. So, yeah, we're going to find someone that's going to be great either way, so it's a good problem to have when you have two candidates that can do it, it's just kind of, kind of nitpicky.
If we get somebody, what I'll do is I'll post on Friday, and then, are you guys planning on coming to the fourth graduation? We could have a quick boardroom up in the library, possibly before graduation to approve the psychologist, maybe.
Maybe a different location.
Yeah, maybe here, then we'll walk up there. We can figure it out, but I mean, what I'll try to do is if we do get somebody, if they do have, I want to secure their contract, so, but I'll let you know. And other than that, I don't think we're really have any hiring right now, we're looking at a special ed at Friendship, but we're kind of on hold for a couple of things because we want to see budgets and how things work, so. We're doing pretty good. And then you guys got cards for Jackie and for Erica, so could be rocking and rolling. This is actually one of the least amount of people that we're hiring. Got technology too, we're working on, Sam and I are starting to go into different companies at Fond du Lac and see if we can pull people off the floor. Yeah, if you know anybody, let us know.
And we have one person that Tony Patrick emailed us that is
From Illinois.
Out of state, going into the right teacher program and has some good things, so I emailed him, we're trying to get ahold of him.
Samantha might start doing welding too, there's like a welding thing on the way up Oshkosh, that'd be cool.
I'm just going to try, read some of this, maybe it's last week, about hiring and in Wisconsin, most districts have a turnover like 10% at least, so I think we're way below that and have been as far as staffing goes, so that really spoke, I thought, oh man, we're, we haven't hit that for a while, so I thought that was good.
I would bet we're probably at less than five.
Yeah.
And a lot of the hiring we do is because we have additional staff.
And there's also, I think, research, the number, it costs like $20,000 to hire a new person just with time spent and re-trains and all that, so I think it's a nice one. You look at those factors, where we're at.
Culture. Orange Frog, 22nd training in August, all new staff, and Mike forgot it, it's going to go. Frank's going to go.
We're going to do one of those cards that we think is maybe at least one of us thought was for somebody else and wrote something kind of dark.[1703.22]
Sure, that's a good, yeah, gotcha, you might've thought it could've been possibly like a student's graduating, gotcha.
And maybe he got me off, and maybe the student's card might be a little off, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
We'll just look at the explanation that everything's-
Hypothetically, you might get a laugh, I'm not sure.
Alright, a couple things, and I wanna turn it over to Samantha. I had shared some confidential documents with the students' names about college and career ready, ACT, and this is gonna be a larger conversation that I want, hey Samantha, what we'll do is, is depending on how it goes, about that first August meeting, I think you'll have some more time, but we'll have more finalized data and things like that, we can bring in more of the team, but I wanna set this up for next year too, kind of, we'll brush on it now, but I wanna really set it up for next year, how we're gonna really attack and get into college and career ready, and look at what we're doing for ACT and all that. But Samantha has done a great job at the high school getting the data, called her on Friday, Saturday morning, or texted her at like seven, hey, you up, can I call you? And our, our, our results aren't where we want, I'll tell you that right now. But we have more data now, and we know what we need to do more now than ever before. So I'll turn it over to Samantha in a minute, but before that, June fourth, twelve thirty-seven, be at the high school at twelve thirty-seven, no later than that, and get your flowers on. We have graduation, that should be a good time. And then human resource guides, that's all gonna be coming in June, so we'll bring that. And then, got, there's a bill that is only impacting the, the school district or found lack currently right now, we're on the cutting edge. That's A B Assembly Bill three-three-two. Jeremy Thienfeldt has put it out there, trying to get co-sponsorship, not a people, a lot of people are, but they're all gonna support it. What A B three-three-two is, is that if any school district has less than ten percent of their land in a Class Two city, the Board of Education could select the number of signatures needed between twenty and a hundred. And here's a kicker, the, the legislature, in their unbenot wisdom, said that whenever they have a new bill, they have to have hearings, and in order for the hearings to be considered legitimate, there has to be at least three unpaid people coming there. So, a lot of times when they do hearings, like let's say Mike and Vicki work for neuroscience and were doing something on legalizing some sort of new drug, we would pay those two to flying from Utah, and then they would talk and they would do that. DPI sometimes pays people to come in, so whenever they have bills, they pay experts to testify. So you need three people that aren't paid. The three people that aren't paid that this would impact include me and you five. So, Lisa Fryberg asked that if this does get a hearing, that, that we would really, she'd really like me to bring a couple people, you, to come down and testify about a bill that only impacts us, so.
I'd be more than willing to do that. After talking with the guy, the lobbyist from WSB, I was-
Dan Rosfeller?
Kinda got into it a little bit, so I'd love to do that, so cool. And I think you're coming from an actual board member too, which didn't make sense, because we can explain our situation here, why it's different and why it's needed.
And what I love is you guys aren't like, let's get rid of signatures, it's like, let's just make it a little more manageable. And, I mean, thank you Vicki and Mike, but I didn't know who that was gonna win, nobody was right, you know, until writing, and I mean, if you got two people, if you got a person got five votes and that was the most, they are the person, so, it gets, and I'm really appreciative that you guys stepped up to become official writing candidates, but that caused us, that could've, that could've caused some significant change or a different direction. Yes, you were. By landslide, yes.
And it's out of proportion, too, for the little area with no voters, and that causes us to have to go to a hundred. And I remember over the years, not just their election, but talking with people about maybe running, and then you tell them, well, but then you have to get a hundred signatures to it, wow, yeah, then there was no interest in doing it that way, so, I think this is a quirk that, like you said, affects us only.
So far.
So far, and hopefully we can get that squared away, so.
How about that? We are, we're causing stuff to happen.
Let us know for the hearing.
I will, I will. Alright, other than that, we can cover all the other stuff later on. Alright, turn it over to Samantha, if you wanna just talk about the graduates, we're right with some of that, and then just kinda touch a little bit, 'cause they had gotten your slide presentation that Dan Hiley, I thought, did a really nice job putting together, and the current career in college ready numbers.
Sure. So, the, the first document is always the, you know, you know it's coming in May, the stressful document that the counselors and I create earlier on, the kind of, you know, credit recovery, if you take a look in the-
I have not shared that one with them yet, I want them to get through this weekend, but I will share it with them after today.
I think, didn't I?
Maybe you did, I don't know, did you see a list of students, like fifteen students, seniors that were, okay, then you got it, good, thanks for just doing that, great job, way to be efficient.
Yep, yep, yep. So just, you know, not that you guys don't know this, but I mean, we really, I, I can't tell you the number of contacts we've had with these students and families. We set today's date for Odyssey Credit Recovery quite a long time ago, and have been on kids, you know, some of them who've had their credit recovery since summer, some since fall, a couple, you know, they failed a class this semester, you're like, okay, this is what you need. And for some kids, you know, if Monday at eight AM is the due date, then they're gonna get it done Sunday night. If so, you know, some kids, the Friday is the deadline, it's just the way it works, so, kudos to Sam Flood, because her and I had emailed all the kids, you know, after, again, teen reminders, and said, and Friday, okay, we're both available all weekend, emails with any questions, nothing's, you know, gonna lock you out, everything, we kicked all the other freshman sophomore juniors off of credit recovery, only seniors could get on it, so there was, you know, again, no lasting excuses. So, please, if you have a chance sometime, take a look at that document, the kids who are in purple on the left, I don't know why I picked purple, just, you know, looked at that document, and they finished, and so they got an email from us this weekend, and then we talked to them today, hey, great job, a couple of them, they'll still need to pass their classes, and so today was the communication with teachers and kids and families, hey, this student needs to pass their final exam on Wednesday, all, all those things that we, that we do. This list was a little overwhelming to me this year, that, you know, we, we got some new kids in from other districts that we knew were really credit deficient and did our best to give them opportunities to make it up. A couple new coming in, like we had one student at ALC that, you know, we knew it's not possible, we can't give fifteen credits in a year. So, she knew right, right, that, hey, I'm, I'm coming here for more than a year, but I, I applaud her, she's doing great, and I know that she will finish next year. We had a, a person who has an IEP, and we had that decision together, and family's been very involved in knowing, you know, that's the right decision for that student as well coming back, so. I, I love to have everyone purple on that, on that list, and I'll know a little bit of more tomorrow and Wednesday of, you know, who passes their finals and, and issues, but I feel really good about the two things. One, we have given so many reminders and encouragement and everything to these kids that they can't say, you know, they didn't know or didn't have that, and then two, we've also told kids, you know, if after Friday, when seniors are done, if you haven't finished your credit recovery, if you aren't passing your classes, we want you here next week, because, you know, we'll still work with you to get your diploma, it's not like, oh, well, you're done, you didn't make it up, that there's, there's plans for these kids as always to make sure that they have opportunities. On the bottom of that document as well, is some of our list of kids who we have given applications for, for ALC, to try to again, you know, get them back on track in order to graduate summer school, and then just some high needs that we feel, you know, just as reminders to us as far as what kids need. I, I'm hoping to have one of our students who you may be aware of about Challenge Academy, I'm hoping that that, I, I just heard this week that-
Just today?
That was sent in.
We got that, you know, that agreement? Just today, just got that in.
So.
Knock me over with the thunder, but-
Man, I, I, you know, parents do not know the student will attend, but they have at least sent in the application, so that's a, a huge step, so, we'll see. I have two other kids who are still considering it, and they're running out of time to apply, but we'll see what they decide, if they don't, we'll, you know, look at another plan for them. So that, that was that document, any questions on that one for me?
Once again, our goal is every kid graduates, we'd love for them to graduate on time with their class and the ceremony, but what I appreciate what Samantha and the high school staff does, is that they're not gonna give it to them. So if that means they come back for summer, if that means they come back for next year or whatever, we're not gonna give up on them, but we're gonna make them earn it. Because the ones who have done it, they've done the right things, they've worked hard, and it's, they need to realize that, everybody needs to go through that. Or for the board, when you guys give those documents, you're saying that they pass and qualify, and we're gonna make sure that we keep that as rigorous and consistent as we can. By the way, did we get the diplomas?
Yeah, Pete's gonna sign them on Wednesday, we, we've got-
Those trees that, yeah.
We've gotten them very late this year because they sent us the wrong ones.
Cool.
So we didn't really wanna sign those.
Were they all in there? Is everybody's in there for sure?
Yeah. Second thing is just Dan Hiley's presentation, which he shared with our school as a part of the Junior PLC. So one of the things, just wanted to share with you guys on that, in our discussions, I think we've done everything, you know, that we had thought of at the time, you know, we've done the practice, ACT with kids, the test in the fall, and we'll continue to do